Welcome to the regular board meeting, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five of the Mililani Maualua Launani Valley Neighborhood Board Thirty-Five. I called the meeting to order. And this time ask Scout BSA Troop Six-Six-Four to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise for the presentation of the colors. Troop attention, color guard attention. Color guard forward, or yeah, color guard forward, march. Color guard, mark time, march. Color guard, right, go, march. Color guard, ready, all. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance Scout salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Ready to? Color guard, forward, march. Color guard, mark time, march. Color guard, ready, all. Color guard dismiss, you may be seated.
All right, thank you, Troop Six-Six-Four. Moving on our agenda, meeting decorum, Vice Chair Thomas Shiro.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chair. On behalf of Chair Hazama and your Mililani Maualua Launani Valley Neighborhood Board Thirty-Five, welcome everyone. In terms of meeting decorum, this board again welcomes all ideas, feedback, comments that you would like to share. We just asked that those that are joining us in the audience, if you could raise your hand, be recognized by the chair, he'll signal you up to come to the microphone to speak. For those that are joining us virtually again, please just use your mute button when not talking and then the hand signal when you want to be recognized also by the chair. And then the last is that we just asked that you, if possible, so we can get all the feedback and comments to limit it to about three minutes or less if possible. Thank you very much. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair Thomas Shiro, Vice Chair Thomas Shiro. Moving on to our monthly reports, I don't see the Honolulu Fire Department, so we'll move on to the Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening. Lieutenant Darrell Oliver, I'm accompanied by Sergeant John Yoshioka, and we're from District Two, the Waihau Police Station. I'm going to be covering the statistics from September first, twenty twenty-five to September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. In the Waihau, sorry, in District Two, in your respective area, we've had one assault, three burglaries, zero robberies, two unauthorized entry into motor vehicles or car break-ins, one hundred and twenty calls for service. The safety tip, in twenty twenty-five, traffic fatalities on Oahu have doubled, with sixty lives lost compared to thirty at the same time in twenty twenty-four. To help reduce these tragic numbers, we urge all motorists to remain attentive while driving and to refrain from using mobile electronic devices. Staying focused on the roadway is a simple but critical step towards keeping our roads and communities safe.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Any questions for the Honolulu Police Department this evening? Anyone online? Seeing none, thank you, Lieutenant.
Have a good evening, thank you.
You too. Take care. Okay, moving on to the Board of Water Supply.
All right, good evening, I'm Stephen from the Board of Water Supply, and for our Board of Water Supply monthly report, there has been no main breaks in the district last month. And our general announcement is promoting our Imagine a Day Without Water event. I placed a flyer on your table, if you can come, it's going to be a lot of fun, it's a free family event. It's going to be at Winward Mall on Saturday, this Saturday, from ten to two, you'll learn about the One Water concept, we're going to have interactive displays. Over twenty city-state and community organizations will be there, and we're going to have a rain barrel workshop, and we'll also be giving away a forty-five gallon rain barrel. So yeah, we'll see you on Saturday, if you can come at Winward Mall.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Board of Water Supply this evening? Anyone online?
Chair.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Teresa.
Is there an upcoming event in Waihau this month with regards to border water that you could make an announcement for on the twenty-seventh, I think it was?
We have one, there's the Disaster Fair in Waialua that we're going to be at.
Okay, not this year, not this year, not at the water park?
No, no, this-
The freshwater park?
Yeah, so the Imagine a Day Without Water moves every year.
That's the Waialua one this year.
Yeah, the Waialua one will be on the North Shore.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anyone online? All right, thank you, Stephen.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to our Military Rep Colonel, good evening.
Good evening, Chair and Board, Lieutenant Colonel Andrew Hawaii Garrison. For the remainder of July, the Army in Hawaii will continue training on East Range with Ranger and Jungle Tactics, Small Arms Blank Fire, weekdays, six AM to six PM. Aviation training will occur through the nineteenth from six AM to six PM. And artillery mortar and demolition, demolitions, live fire training on Schofield barracks will occur from early morning to late evening hours on the twentieth and the twenty-seventh through the thirtieth. So still loud noises. All right, um, so Gold Star Mothers and Family Day Ceremony. US Army Garrison Hawaii and Survivor Outreach Services will host the Gold Star Mothers and Families Day Observance on September twenty-eighth. This special celebration is to honor the enduring sacrifice of those who have lost a loved one in military service. The event will include speeches from military leaders and guests and patriotic displays. The event will take place at the National Memorial Cemetery of the Pacific, so Punch Bowl. JPMRC Twenty-Fifth ID will, Twenty-Fifth Infantry Division will execute annual JPMRC exercise between seven and sixteen November. Please be aware, there will be an increase in traffic and noise in the weeks leading up to and after the exercise. Residents may also experience increased military aircraft overflight, increased low-flying helicopters and fixed-wing aircraft flown in and out of Wheeler Army Airfield. The majority of the training will occur in the northern portion of Oahu, but however, some will still occur in the central area. Residents will see troops traveling to and from these training areas. The next job fair will be at the Oahu Veteran Center on October fourteenth from eight thirty AM to two PM. Job offers and provisional hiring, the day of, the job fair may occur. Advanced applications may go to www.himwr.com. Those are for the MWR jobs, bowling, bowling alley, child youth services, and food services as well. Any questions and concerns or to be added to the distribution list, please call the Community Concern Line at eight zero eight, seven eight seven, one five two eight. And we appreciate your understanding and patience with all the noise we make.
Thank you, Colonel. Any questions for our Military Rep this evening? Anyone online? Hearing none, thank you, Colonel. Okay, let's move on to our Board Business this evening, first up on our agenda, and I will make a clarification on this agenda item. This is an update on the Workforce Housing Project at Mililani High School, Sheri Nakamura, Hawaii SFA.
Thank you, Chair Hazama and Board members. I'm pleased to report that we have an update, we have reached a new milestone in our Workforce Housing Project. Let's see, we have the presentation slides available. Yeah, okay. Now that we have- You can actually move it to the next slide. Yeah, okay, so we have settled on a site for the housing on campus, and as you can see in this slide, it's the red area that is outlined, that's the site of, Site B. We were at Site A originally, but because, thank you very much to the community for providing your comments about the location of the project, we have moved it to Site B, I'll say, and that's outlined in red on Mililani Campus, which is by the athletic fields. We are going to be embarking on a state, the State Environmental Assessment, or EA, so you can go to the next slide, which is a description of the EA. A Pacific Housing Assistance Corporation, the nonprofit developer who has more than forty years of experience of developing affordable housing here on our islands, is our partner in this project and will be overseeing the EA process. So the EA will begin next month, so that recipients can help to identify any potential environmental issues early. This will help avoid, minimize, or mitigate any impacts prior to construction. The Environmental Assessment is a planning tool to identify potential environmental impacts. It will address issues such as traffic, flora and fauna, archaeological resources, impacts to cultural practices on-site, noise, and other environmental resources. You can go to the next slide. There will be a period for public review, and that's in the yellow. Public to review the draft EA and share their comments or concerns. Pacific Housing expects to have a draft EA available in the first quarter of twenty twenty-six, and that corresponds to that slide. Pacific Housing also plans to hold a public meeting in early twenty twenty-six to provide the community with an update on the EA. Any community feedback from the meeting will be reviewed as the final EA is prepared, which we anticipate will be completed in May of next year. So I hope this gives everyone an idea of where we are today with the Mililani Project. We plan to provide updates as we make progress, as I am giving today. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me or visit our website, and you can end at the final slide, we have the QR code where you can click on that link. So I'm happy to take any questions and I can answer them the best to my ability.
Thank you, Sheri. Any questions for SFA? Go ahead, Alice.
Yeah, how are you going to publicize the public meeting that you're going to have with the yellow thing up there?
Well, we can use some of the tools that we utilize when we had the community meetings. So we do have a list from all those community meetings that we can utilize. We asked Mililani High School as well as Mililani Waiana Elementary School to send out to their parent, they have like a parent distribution portal, so we can advertise that way. We, of course, can show up here and publicize to you folks, and I can send information to the Chair, not only Chair Hazama, but also Chair Danielle Bass of Mililani Waipo. I do provide updates to that Neighborhood Board Twenty-Five as well. So we're planning to use those means of communicating to the community. If you have other suggestions, we're happy to take them. Mililani High School, utilizing the school. We also just started an Instagram, so we are going to advertise through our Instagram. And we also have very good relationships with the area representatives who also have their own communication network, so they'll be able to help us deliver the message of providing that when it's time for the community to provide input on that draft EA.
Okay, Teresa.
So the size for this, this new plot, is it larger or smaller than the first plot?
I am not sure, I know that it's different. So there's been work being done on the, I guess it's a pre-design, pre-development, I guess, the- I, I don't know, I don't want to misspeak, but there are various assessments and evaluations that are being done right now. So it is a different site and the adjustments did have to be, will have to be made.
Yeah, it just looked narrower, and then because there's new construction in that area already for school facilities, it's one of those weird cruxes, I was just curious if they addressed that.
Well, we are communicating with the Department of Education and the Principal, Principal Murphy consistently, because we have, we have to negotiate the space and everything, and we are doing that, and we have at least come up with the, the outline of the, of the, of the area.
But then, the entire campus, Mililani High School campus is almost forty-four acres. This project is going, is going to take a one point seven acres of land. So it's a very small sliver of property compared to the campus. Any other questions for, oh, you want to say something?
Well, I do see two members of Pacific Housing online, and perhaps they didn't want to be singled out, but I do see their cameras open. But I would like to introduce Karen Arokawa from Pacific Housing Assistance Corporation, she's the Director of Development. And also Lacy Shimabukuro is the Project Manager for this particular project. So they are a little shy, but they welcome, they welcome your, your support and your attention to this really, really important project. I mean, again, at the end of the day, we want to help our teachers, which ultimately help our students and our school system. So I know this is the first project, there are, we, we did have a little bit of a rough start, but we're really focusing on the goal, which is to help our education system, and what a wonderful place to start, which is Mililani.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone online? Okay, so Sheri, I have a question, so the Board, I got this letter on behalf of the Board from PBR Hawaiian Associates regarding the announcement of the EA.
Yes.
They're asking the Board to submit comments to them by October fifth.
Right, so maybe for that question, I'm going to pass it, go ahead.
Hi Chair, that letter went out from PBR Hawaii, which is Pacific Housing EA Consultant, and this is pre-assessment. So they're reaching out to area stakeholders to see if there's projects that are planned and other things that we should be aware of, so we can incorporate them into the environmental assessment. So you're right, the thirty-day comment period is, is just for this pre-assessment. Then we'll work on the environmental assessment, that will be published, and there will be another thirty-day public comment period. So once the EA is ready and released, everyone is able to access that and has thirty days. So this is not the only opportunity by any means.
Okay, thanks for clarifying, clarifying that, I was like, oh, did I miss something? Go ahead, Stephen.
Thank you, Stephen Landris, for the, you have already just spoke, do you actually have a schedule you could publish and provide to the neighborhood board system?
I think Sheri just went over the timeline for the EA, we're looking at, we're doing our technical studies right now, so these are site visits and surveys for biological, cultural, archaeological, as well as traffic and noise. So these are ongoing, we are hoping for the draft EA to be published in early twenty twenty-six, and there will be a public comment period thereafter, as well as another public meeting. And these updates will be provided through SFA on their website and at these meetings as well.
Sheri, why don't you?
Thank you.
I can get it to the Board then.
Okay, sure.
That'd be great.
Got it, got it, I will-
Anna, you gotta come up, Anna, you gotta come up, because they can't hear you.
Given that the teachers are working class and they need transportation, how many legally, how many dedicated parking spaces do you have for each person that's going to be given housing?
Presently, we have a hundred fifty-six parking stalls planned for this, for the project.
And that's more than one per unit.
Right.
Well over, yeah.
Okay, that's good. Any other questions? Anyone online? Okay, thank you very much, Sheri, and-
I, I will get you the slide of the time, the timeline.
Just email it to me. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. I don't have an update of the MOU with the DOE and the Mililani Middle School parking lot yet, but I don't know if Trish is on, Representative Lachica on? I don't see her on.
Hi Chair Hazama, she is not, she is currently in Santa Fe, we do not have an update either, we have not heard anything back yet in regards to city and county and the MOU, but I can follow up.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to Item C, Walk Bike Drive Presentation, Paula Bender, Hawaii Bicycling League, Paula, are you online?
I am, can you hear me, sir?
Okay, go ahead.
I understand that I sent you the presentation, does your NCO have that ready to run?
Yes, I think so.
All right, and when that's done, I, I will say a few words and take questions. Thank you.
Hi Paula, is it the video, the video?
Walk Bike Drive?
Yes, okay, let me see.
Thank you. Oh, is that you, Camille? Didn't I send that to you last week? Hawaii Bicycling League's Walk Bike Drive Presentation encourages road users to drive with aloha. The Walk Bike Drive Program is funded by an H dot grant to highlight the importance of pedestrian and bicycle safety on Hawaii's roads. Whether we walk, bike, or drive, safety is everyone's responsibility. The Vulnerable Road Users Law is part of a broader effort to enhance safety on Hawaii's roadways by addressing the risks faced by those traveling outside of motorized vehicles, such as pedestrians and cyclists. So far in twenty twenty-five, the entire state has more than doubled its traffic fatalities over twenty twenty-four. The average number of traffic deaths from twenty fourteen through twenty twenty-four included twenty-eight pedestrians, nearly twenty-eight motorcycles and mopeds, four bicycles, and nearly forty-four motor vehicles. Whether on foot, on a bike, or in a vehicle, commuters are a traveling ohana. We recognize license plates, stickers, and company logos, we merge with a wave, or better yet, a shocker. And when there is a crash, we learn just how close we are to each other. Here are a few things to keep in mind when sharing the road with cyclists. Respect the green bike boxes, that gives cyclist a head start on a narrow section to reach the bike lane. Remember, when in a crash, the cyclist will always be more vulnerable, no matter who was right legally. When passing, allow for three feet between your vehicle and a cyclist, even if it means waiting a few seconds to do it safely. Share when you see sharrows, which are places where cyclists cannot safely drive on the shoulder of the road. What are cyclists telling you? Understand the road signals used by cyclist. Left arm pointed down or right arm behind back means the cyclist is stopping. Left arm outstretched means the cyclist needs to switch to the left lane or to make a left turn. Left arm pointed up or right arm outstretched indicates cyclist is making a right turn. At a recent NOAA Hurricane Awareness Meeting, HBL Executive Director Travis Council provided another reason bicycles make sense. During and following an emergency weather event, a human-powered bicycle is most reliable, especially if power outages persist, the internet is down, and roads are blocked to motor vehicles. Everyone has the right to be safe on Hawaii's roads. This precept in Hawaiian law originated with King Kamehameha the First in seventeen ninety-seven. The law was added to the state constitution in nineteen seventy-eight. Please, Kukua, make the right decisions, driving with aloha means everyone has a great day. Please send your comments or questions to Walk Bike Drive Coordinator Paula Bender at paula@hbl.org. Mahalo.
Hey, Paula, are you still there?
Yes, I'm still here, and-
Go ahead.
I wanted to emphasize the vulnerable users, road users law, and to let everybody know that if you're in a car or a truck or a bus, you're not a vulnerable user, but if you see somebody on an e-bike or scooter, or motorcycle, or bicycle, or pedestrian, those are vulnerable users. Unfortunately, we cannot control everybody's activities while they're out on the road, but if you see somebody doing tricks such as wheelies, you might feel like you're a vulnerable user at that point. Just, I just would recommend that everybody take a deep breath, calm down, slow down, give those wild kids their space, so that you don't get, you don't have to pay higher fees or fines, penalties as a result of getting mixed up in an accident with somebody who's doing something very stupid. I'm happy to take anyone's questions.
Thank you, Paula, any questions for Hawaii Bicycling League, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On KHON TV Tonight, I heard a statistic, and it said that in the last ten years, eleven hundred vehicle or traffic accidents has happened, combining e-bikes, bicycles, and what's the other one, motorcycles. And they said that the eleven hundred is a lot of, and, and the other, the other part of it was is that this year we have doubled, in just this, by this time of the year, we have doubled the number of the same kind of accidents as last year, and the preponderance is in e-bikes. And I have been in conversation with our representatives on many occasions, referring to e-bikes. I see a problem with bicycles continuing to be a problem, and that's because the legislature did some reacting by legislation, but not by a long shot. And my consideration has always been that no e-bike should be allowed to anyone over sixteen who has not got a driver's license and who has, you know, done the process. That no four-year-old child or six-year-old child that have an e-bike, and these kind of things are going to continue to happen. So my question to you is, how are you taking that into consideration?
The Hawaii Bicycling League is always lobbying for safer laws and legislation to help improve these, to help improve these rules, because I'm not even sure that there is an education requirement when it comes to e-bicles. As a bike ed instructor who teaches fourth graders how to ride bikes, some of these kids tell me, oh, at home I have an e-bike, and these kids are fourth graders. They might be big, but they're still in fourth grade, they shouldn't be, they shouldn't, I tell them, oh, are you fourteen and you're in fourth grade? But in the age- But the age limit is, you know, um, fourteen or fifteen, an adult has to purchase it, but there, I don't see any kind of education, like I said, required, and I, I really do think that that's a, that's a necessity.
Thank you. Teresa, go ahead.
Chair, my apologies ahead of time as I will try to conduct myself with proper meeting decorum as I approach this topic. Am I correct to hear that you use the law of the splintered paddle, Kanawai Mama La Hoi, in your slideshow? Your video? I heard that it was with reference to bicyclists being vulnerable people. Is that correct?
Um, actually, I think that we use that because we're emphasizing vulnerable users. And whereas in, when it was first written, it was by somebody who was not obviously a king, but someone who was appearing vulnerable and at the mercy of two fishermen who wanted to beat him and rob him. And so we take that, just as the HPD does.
Okay ma'am, I, my question is, was it meant to refer to bicyclists as vulnerable people? As it in context to law of splintered paddle? I would like to extend my greatest urgency for you to meet with a cultural or Hawaiian historical individual to educate yourselves on what that law actually, when it was proclaimed by King Kamehameha the first, he was the one who was attacking.
That's what I was just saying.
But he, he, I'm not going to equivocate with you. As a native Hawaiian, I'm sharing with you the actual knowledge, and that's why I encourage your organization to meet with someone. University of Hawaii has many people within authority of this, but it stipulates that the vulnerable are such as the elderly, women, and children, that they must be protected from harm and allowed to rest safely by the roadside. You are taking that law out of context, and I will not allow you folks to continue that. I am dismayed that you utilize something of our culture to make it imported into what you want it to be. That is not how it's used. So I would again, Chair, that is my encouragement, that the organization find a better way to use that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question? Anyone online?
Could I?
Thank you very much Paula.
Could I respond, sir?
Oh.
Can I respond, sir?
I, I think we're okay, Paula, just.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. I have to go to another board now. Thank you. Mahalo.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our next board agenda item, Kamonui Project Update. We have somebody from group here, Gil.
Good evening.
Give us a minute to.
Yes.
That was fast.
I want to thank the board for hearing the, and considering this, uh, this idea, this recommended resolution. My name is Gil Riviere. I live in Waialua. I'm Director of Keep the North Shore Country and very active in this project with an alliance that we've put together of over twenty-four associations and groups called the Ko'opaka'ala Alliance, and we are united in opposition to what we think is a very bad idea and very bad planning, and very bad planning that has repercussions throughout the island. And so with that, I'd like to share the presentation that we gave. We have been giving to multiple neighborhood boards, and there was the, the meeting on July thirtieth of the four neighborhood boards, and it was noted at that time that the, the developer had been invited to the project. So in the next slide, please, you can see that the developer's response upon the invitation was, "We appreciate your outreach and invitation to participate. We remain committed to engaging in the community and still plan to share the full details of our project in the future." In the simplest terms, we are not yet ready to present that at this time. In the meantime, would remind you that we have an offer to meet privately with you to discuss an appropriate and productive engagement process when the time is right. We find that particularly off-putting because this project was first conceived at, at least by two thousand eighteen, seven years ago. The, in, in the next slide, please. The, Joey Hussein is the, the, the main developer. He comes from a family that developed Whistler Mountain in British Columbia. So he has some, uh, family connections to a lot of money that's related to gondolas and, and mountain accesses and things. So he's been involved since two thousand eighteen when he came to the North Shore Neighborhood Board and said that he had acquired this land, twenty-three hundred acres, and he was hoping to open it up for local people to get on the land and use it. And he was going to allow residents to go up into the land in the afternoons and ride their bikes and maybe go hiking. And he made statements such as, well, I could even see surfers choosing not to go surfing in the evening. Maybe they would go up and ride mountain bikes up in the mountain. And so we all thought that was a strange statement too. He didn't really talk about gondola or building this major visitor center on the side of Kalakaua Road, right above the cliff. He said he would be back in the future. He said, "This was my, this is my first meeting, and we will be back as we develop plans. We will present to you and we will, we seek your advice." So that was in two thousand eighteen. They have never presented to the public. They've never come back. They got a conditional use permit minor from the city in two thousand nineteen. That was based on the idea that it's an agribusiness. In, in other words, it's accessory and secondary to supporting agriculture. The land is zoned agriculture. It has been in cattle grazing for many decades. And it is, um, there's a lot of endangered species on that, on the hillsides of Mount Ka'ala and in the valleys there. There are hueo, there's a opea pea. There is proven now that there's wa'ou, the Hawaiian petrel. There are snails that are endangered. There's, there's so many things on that mountain, and there's, there's been no environmental assessment of this thing. So going through the timeline, it went more or less silent for about five years. And then last year, uh, we, that have been following this, uh, heard that he was planning to do a modification. So I'm going to describe those modifications and requests. Uh, going on the next slide then, we have the conditions of the first approval in two thousand nineteen, and I won't read all of these. You have them for reference. But the first item is, is critical. It says fifty percent or more of the site must be in active agriculture before you can get your building permits and proceed. He pledged a lot of agricultural activity forestry that I'm going to talk about in a minute. But going down to the last item on this screen, you see a very important clause on the condition. It says, "In case of any addition and or changes in use, the director shall determine if the proposed change requires a minor or major modification of the conditional use permit." We're saying that in no way can this be a minor conditional use permit. If anything, we, we think the whole thing's ill-conceived, doesn't belong there, and should, should be revoked. But in absence of that, it should at least be a major conditional use permit. And they should look at the impacts on endangered species. They should look at the impacts on the community, should look at the traffic. They should look at the wastewater. Um, they have sized this wastewater system magically to say that they will not use more than, I think, fourteen thousand gallons a day, which happens to be sixteen hundred fifty people. They promise, that's it. That's all they're going to do, sixteen hundred fifty people. And then they recognize that if they exceed that, then gosh, maybe they'll have to come back and reanalyze and build a bigger wastewater treatment plant. So the purpose of environmental review is early consultation and advice and knowledge of, of what's being proposed. So at a minimum, that's required. Going then forward, the next series of slides, you can just scroll through those, please. Um, we presented, there's the, the twenty-three hundred acres, um, uh, of the hillside above, uh, Waialua. The, the moku is Kamonanui. So they've taken the name. It's the Kamonanui Agribusiness Project. And, um, and then go, if you could scroll through, you'll see that there's the, the visitor center, I think, slide is that the next one? Right next to the reservoir, if you're going down the hill, you'll see the, the reservoirs on the, on the cliff, Mount Ka'ala side. Three hundred car parking lot. They, one of the modifications that they need to do is move the driveway, because this is a very dangerous road. And so they've made an agreement, a joint development agreement with a neighboring parcel to relocate the, the driveway. Now that, that owner is, is not happy that we're pointing out that he's part of this development now, um, but, but he is. It's part of a joint development agreement. So there's that. Uh, the next slide shows the, the visitor center, uh, the concept. They use, um, they use concepts such as the entry kipuka and, uh, other, other terminologies that, uh, might sprinkle it with some, some, I don't know, some idea. Uh, the next item is the, the next page is the, the mid, midway station. So this would be built on Pu'u Kamonanui, which is halfway, it's across the valley, but it's kind of halfway up the, up the mountain. So that's where the transit station is. The next slide is the, uh, the top station. This is where the gondola will come into station and the electric or the motorized, um, chair that rides further up into the mountain. This will be the visitor center, uh, the top with a cafe. Once upon a time, he, uh, the developer told me, um, yeah, we need a permit to operate until eleven o'clock at night. And I said, "Well, how does that support agriculture?" "Well, so we can do agricultural educational activities." "So why do you need a liquor license to operate till eleven o'clock at night?" "Well, so we can do those activities." He even said in, in certain circumstances, he said that the purpose of the gondola is to ferry his workers across the valley with their tools so they can work on the forestry projects. These are all the, the promises and, and kind of innuendos that he's made. Okay, the next slide is the, um, you can see that it's, it's not a zip line at this point. It's a, it's a motorized chair to go up into the mountain. Next slide, please. So he came back in for the modification, and he's, he's rerouting the configuration, um, and, and I'll describe that in a minute. So next slide, this one, the next slide, I think this one is, uh, probably the, the key one. If you notice, he's got a list of the land uses, because it's twenty-three hundred acres. He has to have a majority of the land dedicated to active, uh, and ongoing agriculture. So if you look at the second item, it says lower conservation and natural areas. And he's increasing that definition in the right column by three hundred seventy-six acres. In other words, he's going to designate something as a natural area, and he wants that to count as agriculture. The third item down is the forestry. He had committed that he was going to plant koa and sandalwood and other native forests um, to the tune of six hundred eleven acres. He has completed fifty-one acres, and he wants to be relieved of his commitment for the other five hundred sixty acres. Going down, uh, the next one, grazing. As I said, they've been grazing in that valley for decades. Uh, I don't know why he needs a gondola to continue to support grazing. Um, but he, he's going to crank that up about five hundred acres. And then I would say that you also have other environmental concerns if you're opening up more hillside to more, more grazing. The next item, agroforestry, three hundred twenty-two acres. He just wants to be, just cancel that. So in other words, he's asking, oh, he is adding ten acres to agriculture. So he wants to do forty acres of actual, what he calls agriculture, forty acres out of the twenty-three hundred. Okay, next slide, please. Then this is the original map of, of the project, and you can see the dark green areas at the top is the forest area, the, the plantings that he was proposing to do. And down in the valley, the lower part is the kind of a olive color. That is the, the agroforestry business. And you can see, if you look carefully, you can see the route of the, uh, the gondola was going up, and then he was going to have zip lines. And the zip lines were going to come right back down to the midstation so that people could keep circulating and going. Next slide, please. So he had proposed nine hundred thirty-three acres of agriculture and agroforestry. And if you look at the new map, um, that green area on the left side there, that's his forestry, the fifty-one acres. And just a little bit up by the, uh, the visitor center at the top. He's also changing the plan. He wants to put flushing toilets and have lighting up there at night and such. And then if you look down in the bottom right of the, of his property, right at the bottom of the stream, at the bottom of the valley, you'll see a little, uh, um, like a mauve or some sort of purple color down there. That's where he wants to have the evapotranspiration, uh, field for his wastewater adjacent to Kalakaua's stream, down in the lowest part of, of the properties where he would, where he would propose to take care of his wastewater on the undersized system that I've already described, that he may later, need to upgrade later. So anyway, moving on, eight hundred eighty-eight, eight hundred eighty-one fewer acres of agroforestry. I was going to make that up in other ways. The next slide, uh, shows the list of the, the members of the Ko'opaka'ala Alliance that, that I have, uh, mentioned. There's some, uh, well-known and well-established organizations. We're not finding anybody that can support this project. It's just, it's just a no-brainer. Like, how did this happen? Where did it go? Next slide, please, and I'll, I'll be concluding with, with this. It's difficult to see how this is an agribusiness or how it's got anything really to do with supporting agriculture. It's, it's clear to us that it's a, it's a tourist trap. He needs to build this thing on Kalakaua Road, on this dangerous windy road. Kalakaua Road is statistically the most dangerous road on this, on this island. He needs it to be there so he can have easy, easy access for his tourism activity. It's, it doesn't affect his agricultural activity one way or the other. Seven years into planning, he's never presented to the public. They refuse to come out to the public now. They're, they're not here. They haven't been to any of the neighborhood boards, meetings that we've been presenting. Uh, presence, this similar presentation is going on right now in Nanakuli. We, uh, Waialua voted to support a resolution opposition last night. Waialua will be having, it, it's going on and on. We're just, we're on a, we're on a show, be, on a tour, because people want to know about this project. This is bad planning by the county, and I think we need to, we need to stand up and, uh, and say no. So if you folks are so inclined, um, and then the final slide is, is just the, uh, the information. We are posting all of the information at keepthenorthshorecountry.org. We have a webpage, a subpage called Kamonanui. So you can find all the information. You can find this presentation. You can find the applications, the modification applications and whatnot. Again, you can follow it on Instagram, uh, you know, wherever, social media. Um, one final thing is we did hear a rumor that, um, he's planning to withdraw the application for the modification. But we don't know how serious that is, and it hasn't happened to our knowledge. Uh, we don't know what the status is, and therefore we are not backing down one bit. We're encouraging everybody to keep going. Let's keep reminding, uh, the Department of Planning and Permitting, this is a, a bad project. Uh, this modification gives everybody a chance to reset, and, um, we hope that this board will take a resolution in opposition to the project. And I thank you very, very much for your, your listening to me speak tonight.
Thank you Gil. Any questions from the board? Go ahead Alice.
Um, Gil, um, Dean sent us, I don't know, it was a multi-page thing, uh, showing what was going on and the county uh, and this, probably the state, whatever, whatever was going on. What, what I want to know is that was back in twenty eighteen, I believe, or maybe earlier. And what I want to know is a lot of things have changed since then, and who in the world was authorizing any of this? Who was? I mean, I was not clear at all about, let me, let me be, let me be clear. It's a railroad job. And I want to know who was doing the railroading in our legislature and state and uh, city council and stuff. I mean, I don't know what the deal is. But I looked at the, the stuff that Dean sent, sent, and I was, I was absolutely appalled at the the complete absence of any of our, our, our plans like green, green, you know, and I'll, I just, I just, I can't even speak. Um, but I was just absolutely appalled at the whole process that was in Dean's, uh, paperwork. And as far as I'm concerned, how do we go about demanding that they go back to the drawing board and start all over again? I mean, how, how, you were in the legislature. You, you've got a lot of expertise in this area. How do we go back to making them comply with everything today? Uh, if we even want to, which I don't want them to. Uh, but I think the whole project needs to be thrown out the door because as far as I can see with, with the stuff that Dean put out, I didn't see any compliance with anything.
So I would redirect that a little bit and say that I really believe that this current administration and this current Department of Planning and Permitting has taken a very, very hard look on the project. and this current Department of Planning and Permitting has taken a very, very hard look on the project. I think maybe in earlier days, depending on who was there, what was going on and before the sensibilities that we have and very clear positions we have now. It might have been, you know, reapproved on this modification, but I don't think, my sense is they don't want to approve this. And I think they would have had a chance to approve it now, but they've been going back and forth to the developer with follow-up questions. So I do think they're taking a hard look on it to answer your question.
Any other questions?
Yes, sure. Gil, do I understand you saying that was not an environmental assessment or cultural assessment done prior to the issuance of the original permit?
That's correct.
It was not?
What they tend to do is they say this is a conditional use permit. And they'll say, well, you got to go do a study and see if there's any pueo. And then you got to get a traffic study and you got to go to Department of Health and get approval from them. So they give a long list of things. And what's, I think, saving us in all of this is that he had agreed to all that forestry commitment and he hasn't been able to deliver on that.
Thank you. On the checklist here, I'm seeing a couple items, modification to top station, midstation, et cetera. These items, these long, these line items here are modifications. That means that they were in the original permit, correct? They were approved?
Well, yes, they, the, the upper station of the gondola was at a different spot on the mountain, was higher up. And so instead of having a bend in the design of the, of the gondola, now it goes straight onto another hill. And then they've kind of modified and supersized that landing area to have more activities. And instead of composting toilets, they want to have flushing toilets and such. And they redesigned the, into that mechanized ride that goes further up the hill. So those are the modifications. So in concept, they, they're already approved for gondola and zip lines. And now they're saying, well, we want to reroute the gondola and we want to change a few things.
Great, thank you. Last question, I understand that this person is also involved in Maui in a similar enterprise?
I'm not sure. I don't, I don't know.
My question was if we've heard any comments from the community in Maui?
I don't, I'm not familiar with the Maui project. He has other projects. I know that he's building a big house in Seattle and he's doing some other things. I, I'm not familiar with the Maui project. I couldn't speak to it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone online? Okay, I got a couple of things, Gil. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Yes.
So first thing, I have never seen, so to go back up, back up a little bit. So conditional use minor permit is a ministerial issue. It basically doesn't get any review. It's a very, it's supposed to be a very minor kind of modification to a land or something like that. So this is strictly a county issue, but these minor permits are not intended to be reviewed by anybody because it's supposed to be very kind of straightforward, kind of, you know, small stuff. I've never seen, like I said, I think, mentioned in our July meeting, I've never seen a minor permit like this. That's been approved either. The second thing is I've never seen a provision or a condition in a minor permit that says the director has the authority to change this permit to a major permit. I've never seen that before. And then the, just for your notes, I guess, Gil, the joint development agreement, that will require a city council approval. Development agreements have to go before the city council or approval.
Perhaps I misspoke, but I believe there is a, the joint development to add the additional parcel into the deal, the other owner.
Yeah, so if they're going to enter into a development agreement with the two owners, that process has to go before the council approval.
Thank you.
So he may, he may pull that one. I'm guessing that, that modification to the road is being, coming through the traffic review guys because of the safety and the traffic on the road.
You know, in 2017, when they were preparing for this, before they kind of let anybody know, they did a very, very simple TIAR traffic impact analysis. I don't even know if it qualifies for that because when you, when you look at it, they were saying this road has so much capacity. They said Kamayama Highway has so many more cars than Kalakaua Road. Therefore, we could, we could definitely increase the capacity. It takes into no consideration the ironwood trees, you know, two feet from the road on either side in the swerves. And it was unbelievable. So one of the conditions was to update that. But once again, yeah, based upon what review, you know.
Okay.
One, one more question. I don't recall seeing a traffic study and.
Miners don't require study.
Well, I know it's a requirement, but.
No, no, minors, CP minor applications don't require a traffic study.
This, what happened was.
Is this not a minor development?
It's not, but how, how I think they, they, they're categorizing it is there's, there's a, a use chart. There's a matrix of allowable uses. And one of the allowable uses with a conditional use permit on agricultural land is if you're doing something accessory and secondary to the primary agriculture. And so that's, he's framing it in that, in those terms that this is, I need this to support the cattle grazing.
Well, number one, a traffic study needs to be done on that street because I go out there every Thursday. As you know, I'm part of the Alii Waialua Historic Museum bunch. And I'm out there every Thursday and I can tell you that there's a lot of times, and I go down there at 12:30 to work all afternoon. And I can tell you that there's, there's at least 120, 25 cars coming up on occasion, coming up toward me as I'm going down. Sometimes the other 125 is on my side. And I have seen that traffic stacked up at that three-corner thing right before McNair Gate. I have seen us stacked up for miles. So a traffic study has got to be done out there unless we can just clear this whole situation, which I would prefer. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Theresa.
Chair, just, just a comment. I think the difference is they started this, you know, over five, six years ago. There's been a lot of growth where they've even put a four-way stop or we've never had a four-way stop forever, never, never. And that in its, of itself is a bit of a headache. So I think the overall concept, the community has changed in, in the amount of homes, in the amount of agricultural properties that are actually used before it wasn't, you know, Plumeria Farms on the other side. You've got honeybees, you've got everything now. So I think the use of that area has changed over the last 16, over the last 10 years where there's a lot more people in the properties. And I think that might be something that has to be looked at too, is the growth that happened over that time and how that project would impact all the other growth that came along while they waited and sat on their project.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Anyone online?
Thank you, Gil.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Yes, Alice.
You said that, that, sorry. You said, I'm upset. This whole subject makes me very upset. Anyway.
Just don't throw the microphone at me.
I didn't want it to pick up on the microphone.
Okay.
What I want to know is you said that Teresa had to read the resolution?
That's correct.
Not?
No, you have to read it for the record.
Okay, good. Well, do you need a motion for her to do that?
No, no, Theresa can do it initially.
A big girl, too. Okay, so this is Milani Ma'aka Launani Valley, Neighborhood Board 35, Resolution 2025-01. Requesting the City and County of Honolulu, Department of Planning and Permitting, deny revisions to the conditional use permit of Kalakaua Ranch LLC's Kamanaui Project on the slopes of the Watanai Mountains in the Moku of Waialua. Whereas the Watanai Mountains form the western border of the Waialua Moku with Mount Ka'ala being the highest elevation, one of the most significant Wau'a'ua dwelling place of the gods and deities on Oahu. And whereas Mount Ka'ala, as well as the other mountain peaks in the Watanai Mountain Range, are sacred to Kanaka Ma'uli and play a significant role in the Mo'olelo and Oli of Hawaiian people. And whereas the Watanai Mountain Range is home to many endangered species, included but not limited to the Koli'i Blooms, Ape'ape, Ohi'a Le'ua, Olapa, Apu'u, Kanawao, Apapane, Pueo, which are the Hawaiian short-eared owl. Ope'a Pe'a are Hawaiian hoori bats. Kahuli are Hawaiian snail. Uau are Hawaiian petrel. And that these habitats have been eroded and taken away. And whereas the local communities most affected have serious concerns regarding the potential negative impacts to endangered organisms and ecosystems, culturally significant landscapes and the misuse of agricultural lands, which should be properly utilized to feed our communities. And whereas our rural communities are in the state of crisis due to continuing pressures on our infrastructure, including our roadways, our sewage systems, our beach parks and our ecosystems that are at an unsustainable tipping point, which adversely affects the health, safety and wellbeing of our communities, which adversely affect the health, safety and wellbeing of our residents. And whereas this proposed visitor center would be located on one of the most dangerous stretches, Kalakaua Road, which is already considered the most dangerous road on Oahu. And whereas the City and County of Honolulu, Department of Planning and Permitting, has received an application to modify the original conditional use permit minor approved in 2019 for the Kalakaua Ranch LLC's Kamanaui Project. And that these modifications will severely and negatively impact the Watanai Mountain Range and our communities and allow for tourist activities that will certainly be the primary use of the land rather than agricultural use of the land as zoned. And whereas these modifications will permanently desecrate the cultural importance of the area as well as harm and permanently deplete the natural environment. And whereas these modifications serve no beneficial purpose to our communities, rather they further exploit and commercialize agricultural lands meant to grow food, nonprofits or foreigners and further commercialize the natural environment and take money out of our communities. And whereas these modifications clearly do not fall within the guidelines of a minor permit by their scope and breadth of impact on the land. And whereas no proper archaeological, cultural surveys, traffic studies, environmental studies or community outreach has been conducted for this project, now therefore be it resolved that the Milani Ma'aka Launani Valley Neighborhood Board 35 respectfully requests that the Department of Planning and Permitting deny the request for modifications to the original conditional use permit minor. In addition, should these or any future modifications be requested, the Kalakaua Ranch LLC's Kamanaui Project should be required to resubmit their application as a conditional use permit major, as the project, even as originally conceived, far exceeds the scope and degree of accessory uses on agricultural land allowed under a minor permit. Be it finally resolved that copies of this resolution be provided to the mayor of the City and County of Honolulu, the Honolulu City Council members of District 2 and 8, Matt Wire and Val Okimoro, the state senators of Districts 17 and 23, Donovan Delacruz and Brenton Awal, the representatives of the State House Districts 46 and 47, Amy Peruso and Sean Quinlan, and the Milani Wa'ipo, Wahihua Whitmore Village and North Shore Neighborhood Boards 25, 26 and 27. Chair.
Thank you, Teresa. Board members, we have a resolution for board consideration in front of us. Do I have a second? Moved in second, did board members, any discussion on the resolution in front of us?
I have one thing to.
Yeah, go ahead.
The very last paragraph, do, would we want to send it also to District 38 and 37? I know it's, you know, they're not, maybe we're not directly affected, but I think if we include our representatives, Watsimoro and Lachuka, it could help them and help the other House of Representatives in the direct area to know who's, what's going on and maybe provide support. Is there, I'm just.
Chair.
Friendly amendment.
Sorry. If we're looking to include that, we should, I think it's more pertinent to go on the opposite side of Watanai Valley Range, the opposite side of Watanai Mountain because it impacts the range itself. So if we're going to go that direction, I would move the board to also include our neighboring board on the opposite side that's on the same range as the project.
You're saying Waina in like Nanakuli?
There's, there's two boards and two, three more districts out there.
Chair.
Wait, hold on. So I guess his friendly amendment, you accept it or not?
Can we just send it to them as a courtesy and not have it a part of this? I don't know what the commission allows.
Do they have to be on distribution to get sent out or?
Yes, so if it's on the resolutions, best to include.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
She said, yeah.
Yeah, we can amend that. That's fine. I'll just redo it.
Any other?
Yeah, I was just wondering if that was something we should do or.
Theresa accepted.
Okay.
Any other?
Chair, I have a comment. I support the items in the resolution, but the opening statement says to deny revision to conditional use permit. We don't have the conditional use permit here. I can't see the narrative. I can't see the verbiage. So I can't draw an opinion from that. I can draw an opinion from the comments, from the statements on this document. But I can't in all due conscience deny something I don't have. So if y'all vote, it's fine, but I would probably abstain.
Mr. Chair, when you sent us the, I still have it on my computer, wasn't that a copy of the original conditional use permit? You sent it about, oh God, the first of July, I think?
Yeah, I think the original one was there, however.
It was on, it was on our computer.
That's the original permit. So that is not the submission of the modifications to that permit. We had the original one.
Yeah.
But because the modifications haven't been approved yet, there is really no other document, you know? So the modifications technically are still under review or approval. But I mean, there's the original, there's the original one that we had, yeah.
Yeah, there's a summary on that page 11 of that, of the handout that Gil provided. That's just the summary of what the modifications being requested are. But, you know, it's not, it's not, you know, an official source document from City, et cetera.
He's asking for the original permit. Well, I mean, the original, the existing conditional use permit minor that's been approved. I think we passed that out, but I don't have it with me tonight, so. Okay, any other comments? Any other question, discussion? Anyone online? Actually, we're all here, so. All right, so we have a motion, the resolution, a second and a modification to add some neighborhood boards and representatives and senators from other districts, which I don't have the number handy, but I'll figure this out. Okay. So what do we do? We'll call. Camila.
Okay, the motion is to adopt for Neighborhood 35 to adopt the resolution for Kamanaui Project with the stated amendments in the final clause. Okay, Agate, Fields, Absent, Ku'ahu, Melendres.
Abstain.
Yamato, Oishi. Rogers. Tomashiro. Chair Hazama. Seven ayes, zero no's, one abstention. The motion is adopted.
Okay, resolution is passed. Thank you very much, members. Moving on to our last item on the board, business this evening, empty homes, empty homes tax resolution for consideration. Do you have Ross?
Still conning on?
Hello, Chair, yes, I am here. Thank you.
Okay, Ross, let us, give me a, give us a second to pull up the presentation.
Camila, you want me to present or you want to do?
Camila, you want me to present or you want to do that?
Um, what do you want to do?
Uh, hi, Ross. If you want, you can share it from your screen.
Let's see who, uh, who's fastest. All right, I think I have it up.
Yep.
So.
You're good.
So thank you. Thank, thank you, Chair, for allowing me to be here. Thank you, Board. Uh, my name is Ross Isokane. I serve on the Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board. Uh, but I'm here today as a volunteer advocate for the empty homes tax. Now, I can see this is a pretty engaged community, so I'm sure you've all heard of the bill. But, uh, if you'll allow me to give me, uh, give a quick overview, I'd be happy to do so. So let's jump in. Here's the pitch. We are in a housing crisis. So the statistic is every year, one in four homes sold goes to outside investors. And many of these are used as vacation homes or short-term rentals. They're not lived in, they're not rented to residents. So, you know, how is that helping the crisis? So in a crisis, I believe that we just have to be biased toward action. But I know there are skeptics to this idea. I mean, let's be honest, who wants more taxes? I mean, I don't, because I'm a, I'll just say, I'm, I come from a traditional conservative family, and I also have an accounting and business background, so I don't really care for taxes. But I recognize we're in a crisis and things are getting worse, not better. Uh, more of our young adults are moving to the mainland, or maybe they still live at home with you, because they can't afford anything else. And while we all acknowledge that we have to build more, also realize that the free market has failed us, because rather than building affordable units, we see luxury towers rising into the sky and more of our kamaaina just get priced out. Now, for this idea, there is wide support. Six other neighborhood boards around Oahu have signed on. A recent survey said seventy-four percent of Oahu residents are favorable. Uh, I have to acknowledge there is opposition and it is, you know, largely who you'd expect. There are conservative think tanks weighing in, uh, real estate developers, real estate associations, and, you know, just, just, just others who might stand to profit from transactions to outside investors. So there is opposition out there. Um, really, you know, I'll try to go through these quickly. I just listed some common opposition points we hear. And since I'm an advocate and supporter, I just want to talk about some possible responses. So the first opposition point, number one, the only solution is to build. Even Governor Green says building alone isn't enough. Uh, it won't just get us out of this crisis. So two, uh, you know, property rights. You can't tell me what to do with my property. This is unconstitutional. But I'd say we're in crisis, and this isn't a prohibition or a mandate. We've always taxed different property classes at different rates. Three, people say it's too hard to enforce, but the city will start with self-declarations. Just check a box. Is it your home, your long-term rental? Or is it vacant? That, that's not too hard. And four, uh, this is unfair. We have valid reasons to keep our property vacant. Well, the current bill has fifteen, over fifteen exemptions designed to protect residents. They even exempted a second home for locals, no tax. But investors who own three, four, five homes that are vacant, those might get taxed. So I know, uh, you know, this is a long meeting already, so I'm gonna stop there. Um, last thing I just want to say is just remember, this is about keeping Hawaii homes for Hawaii families. If we don't act, we'll all lose to outside interest. I truly believe that. So I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Ross. Any questions for, uh, Hawaii Homes Coalition now? None? Okay, thank you, Ross. Appreciate it. Okay, Stanton, is she, go ahead, Stanton.
Okay. A resolution in support of establishing an empty homes tax in Honolulu. Whereas the Mililani Maoka Launani Valley Neighborhood Board Number Thirty-Five serves to increase and assure effective citizen participation in the decisions of government as outlined in the City and County of Honolulu's Neighborhood Plan. And whereas Hawaii is experiencing a longstanding affordable housing crisis. And whereas, as a result of this housing crisis, Hawaii continues to experience outmigration, with many residents leaving Hawaii due to the high cost of living and the lack of affordable housing. And whereas Governor Josh Green stated in his twenty-twenty-four State of the State address that building alone won't solve our housing crisis. We need to find new ways to make buying or renting a home more affordable in Hawaii, and a challenge of this magnitude requires multiple solutions. There is no silver bullet. And whereas, in line with Governor Josh Green's statements, many housing experts acknowledge that unaffordable housing rental prices are caused by both A, limited supply driven by existing barriers to build, and B, excessive demand exacerbated by outside global demand. And that any solution will require multiple parts that address both factors. And whereas, despite the pressing need from local residents for housing, the Hawaii Housing Factbook Twenty-Twenty-Five noted that demand for housing from out-of-state buyers continues to account for a significant number of housing transactions. And whereas, in addition to the significant demand from out-of-state buyers, it is further believed that thousands of existing units remain vacant on Oahu, with a significant portion being owned by outside investors. And whereas Honolulu City Council Bill Forty-Six, Twenty-Twenty-Four seeks to address the impact these vacant housing units have on our unaffordable housing rental prices as one potential component of a multi-part solution to our housing crisis by establishing an empty homes tax on Oahu. And whereas, over recent years, there have been, there has been broad public support among Oahu residents for the concept of establishing an empty homes tax in Honolulu. And whereas, in line with this broad public support, the City Council has made multiple attempts in the past five years to adopt an empty homes tax, suggesting continued support from City Council leadership to explore such an initiative. And whereas, an empty homes tax being proposed in Bill Forty-Six, Twenty-Twenty-Four could have the following impacts: discouraging out-of-state demand and investor speculation in our housing units, including the practice of purchasing housing units and keeping them vacant while taking advantage of low property taxes and high appreciation potential. Returning vacant units back to the residential rental housing market by incentivizing property owners to rent or sell to local residents. Generating revenue for local governments to support the construction of affordable housing. And whereas, the current version of Bill Forty-Six, Twenty-Twenty-Four includes various exemptions to mitigate potential harms to local residents who may have a valid reasoning for owning additional housing units they need to leave vacant. And whereas, while Bill Forty-Six, Twenty-Twenty-Four will not by itself resolve the housing crisis, it represents a crucial part of a broader strategy to address our affordable housing crisis now. Therefore, be it resolved that the Mililani Maoka Launani Valley Neighborhood Board Number Thirty-Five stands in solidarity with other Oahu Neighborhood Boards that have adopted resolutions in support of establishing an empty homes tax in Honolulu. And be it further resolved that the Mililani Maoka Launani Valley Neighborhood Board Number Thirty-Five supports the concepts contained within the current draft of Bill Forty-Six, Twenty-Twenty-Four. And be it finally resolved that copies of this resolution be transmitted to the Mayor of the City and Council of Honolulu, the Honolulu Council members, and all neighborhood boards.
Thank you, Stanton. Okay, I have a resolution in front of the board for review and consideration. Do you have a second? For the resolution?
A second.
So seconded, okay, any further discussion on the resolution? Okay, hearing none, um, take a roll call vote.
Okay, the motion is for Neighborhood Board Thirty-Five to adopt the empty homes tax resolution. Agadair, Fields, Absent, Kuahu, Melendres.
Um, no, I don't believe more taxes is the answer. Thank you.
Miyamoto, Oishi, Rogers, Tomashiro, Chair Hazama.
Aye.
Seven eyes, one no, zero abstentions. The motion is adopted.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our residents' concerns, we have any residents' concerns this evening that are not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our elected officials' report. The governor's rep is not here this evening. Uh, anyone from Congressman at Case's office? Nope, hearing none, we'll move on to the office of Mayor Blangiardi. Carrie, good evening.
Sorry, um, can I, can I, can we return to community, um, concerns really quick? So sorry.
Okay, go ahead. Who's, who's on the line?
Hi, I hope everyone can hear me clearly. My name is Sierra Martin. So sorry, my camera is not working tonight. I am from Kialaho West Oahu Homeless Outreach Department. I wanted to introduce myself tonight to everyone in the community and also the chair, members of the board. So what we do is we are assigned to specific districts now within the island of Oahu. We handle North Shore, Waialua, Mokuleia. Um, we also do Haleiva area. That is what we do on Mondays. Tuesday, we handle the Wahihua, Mililani YPO areas. Wednesday, we will be in Waipahu. And on Thursdays, we go through Pearl City and Iea. Fridays, we reserve, we reserve for our admin days. So that's just a rough view of what our weekly schedule looks like. I did drop in the chat some information and how to contact us. Um, so like I said, Tuesday is where we handle Mililani area. So I just wanted to let everyone know that we are aware of the homeless population that is growing in the Mililani community. We have received multiple community reports regarding the homeless encampments found in the Kipapu Gouche area, and we have worked direct with Representative Trish Lachica in regards to that. Um, we are still working on handling that information from what it looks like. Um, we have, we haven't really encountered people as much lately, but we do see the trash there. We do see the trash, and from what we think is that specific spot, when you come around the bend towards the main highway, it looks like that spot is more of a hangout spot, and the actual encampments are more further inside. So I, I found out that we can access that through inside of the Patsy Park. But because the walk through those, the bush is fairly far, and our team consists of women, um, we are looking for volunteer, you know, men to come out with us just for safety reasons. Um, and we do operate only in the daytime, so for safety purposes, um, we're just waiting on that. Alongside that, we have received a few calls from the community in regards to the homeless that have been gathering in the parking lot of the Mililani Town Center. We have gone out there to check on that. It was about four vehicles that has been there overnight. I believe it was a few weeks that they were there, but we haven't received any, any reports of them being there lately since we've assisted them. Um, let me see, other than that, if anyone has any questions or concerns, you want to report homeless that you see, or even if you know homeless, our requirements for our program, um, depends on, basically, they need to be unsheltered or experiencing literal homelessness in a place not meant for habitation or at risk of eviction within the next fourteen days. So for those types of clients, we do ask for like an eviction notice or a written letter from, you know, like a doubled-up house where you're getting kicked out from a family member, you know, there's no legitimate lease involved. We do require some sort of written letter stating the living situation and that the person needs to be out within a certain amount of time. So we do work with a lot of other agencies in terms of housing our clients, and it does take time. Um, when it comes to that, we have to go through a process of, you know, figuring out what housing path they fit on, and that includes ongoing services as well. So we do a lot of close-up case management. And from the point that the person is housed or sheltered is when they officially graduate our program. And we usually set them up with long-term case management at that point. But that is all for tonight. I just wanted to say hello, and I hope we can be added to the agenda in the near future, but thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Sierra. Appreciate it. Any questions? Yeah, go ahead, Stephen.
Sure. Sierra, thank you for that, uh, the information. It was a bit to digest without a presentation. What's the name of the organization again?
Kialaho West Oahu. I did put the information in the chat, um, KWO for short. And we are located in Kaukunuhu. That's where our office is, but we are a mobile outreach.
So you're a nonprofit?
Yes, sir.
Who funds you?
We are funded by HPO, so the homeless programs office and the housing for homelessness and, I'm sorry, homelessness and housing solutions.
Yeah, but is that attached to fed or county or state?
I believe that it's strictly fed. I don't have the specific information, but I can get that for you.
Yeah, if you could forward it to the board, that'd be great to, uh, Chair Hazama. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions?
Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Teresa.
Um, when you say you service Mililani YPO area, does that include the entire scope of Mililani, including Mililani Maoka? Or is it just the lower portions along Kamehameha Highway?
The entire scope of Mililani.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Sierra. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, um, let's see it. Congressman Case is not on, so, um, Carrie? Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Chair. Good evening, Board members and community members. Carrie Castle, Deputy Director with Budget and Fiscal Services, representing Mayor Blangiardi this evening. Uh, excuse me, I have a bit of a cold. Um, so one, one exciting announcement is that the second segment of Skyline is, will be launching in, in a month, on October sixteenth. The second segment, um, will be open and start operating. Um, this includes a Pearl Harbor as well as the, um, airport stops. So, um, and then, sorry, then Lagoon Drive and also Middle Street. So, um, you'll be hearing a lot more, um, through our, excuse me, through our marketing campaign. But, um, anyway, this is another great milestone, so excited to share that. Uh, moving on to the departmental issues from last month. Um, the Mililani Maoka Emergency Access Road. So, um, the committee, the board wanted to understand, like, um, if we're gonna get more signage and then who to contact. Um, our Department of Transportation Services indicates that our Department of Emergency Management, uh, police and fire are among the select public safety agencies which have access to this emergency road. In the event of an emergency, uh, the Department of Emergency Management and HPD will open the road for emergency evacuations and will be directing traffic in using the emergency road. Um, the road, the access road, uh, represents the joint efforts of the Hawaii Department of Transportation as well as our City Department of Transportation. And they're in the process of collaborating on an agreement regarding their respective responsibilities for the emergency road. Um, this agreement will address such issues as the need for um, recommended locations of any informational signage to be installed in the vicinity of the gate to the emergency road. On the second item, had to do, was asking about our Mililani Maoka Road Repayment Project. Um, so I will drop into the chat, there is a map of, um, the location in which the streets that are covered in this project. Um, root pruning is being performed within the project limits. But Chair Hazama, you had asked whether, um, Mehula Parkway was included in this, in this particular scope, and it is not. However, um, I will, I have reached out to our Department of Facilities Maintenance, because to the extent that our Department of Design and Construction is responsible for this segment of the project scope, uh, when it comes to the derouting of Mehula Parkway, um, we'll be turning it over to our Department of Facilities Maintenance. Um, and lastly, you had asked about the MOU between, uh, the State DOE and Parks and Recreation. Um, so just to. the State DOE and Parks and Recreation. Um, so just to echo what someone already reported, I did talk to our Director of Department of um Parks and Recreation, Director Thielen, uh, she does not have any update since the last um report. So just as a reminder, uh, the, the two parties uh met on July second. Um, there was a proposal to put on a combination lock. Uh, we were waiting to hear back from the Department of Education. And as, as far as we know, um, we have not received any word back. Um, that's all I have for my report. I'm open for questions.
Hey, any questions for the Mayor's Rep this evening? Stephen?
Chair, uh, Stephen Melendez here. We asked before a couple of times, a couple of months ago, about the sign to say who to call in case we need to have that gate open. Uh, when you're going to install the sign?
Uh, I just mentioned that uh, there is an agreement that's being worked out between the Department of Transportation, which is the state agency, as well as the Department of Transportation Services, which is the city, and they're coming up with an agreement as to where the informational signage should be installed.
But uh, the question was when? This is an emergency road. If something happens tomorrow, I was gonna have to come there and cut the, cut the chain.
No, so um, when the emergency happens, there will be the Police Department, the Fire Department, our Department of Emergency Management, they will all be there to open up the emergency road. And in the event that there is an emergency, um, they will be there to direct uh the emergency evacuation. So you won't be on your own, I guess is, is what I'm seeing. And, you know, fending for yourselves.
Chair.
Theresa, go ahead.
So knowing full well that there's an emergency, of course, the people were going to come out. Now, where are the signs that say don't park in front of this chain going to go up? Because are they going to be tow trucks or do we have to hop the curb to use the road to go around the chain that is blocked by seven cars every day?
I, I'm just going to reiterate again that the two, the state and the city are working out an agreement as to what signage is appropriate and where it should be put, put in place.
Um, so there is a sign there that says no parking at any time, right next to where that chain is. Um, unfortunately, it's kind of littered with stickers and graffiti and things of that nature. Although I can clearly see it says no parking because police officers don't enforce it. People continue to park there. So I'm trying to figure out what's the happy medium to get the enforcement of a sign that already exists, um, which wouldn't be between the city and the state. That's a city lot, that's a city property. The city should be maintaining their already existing city sign. So I think that therein lies the issue that the sign exists, it's just damaged. So maybe we can get that on the list of, let's get that done and we don't have to talk to the state because it has nothing to do with the, that, that road. It's pre-existing in that uh park and ride facility.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't, was it clear to me that the sign is damaged, but thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, I think that was a emergency uh turnaround area. That's why they didn't want people parking because there's an abutted area right in that area. So even before that chain was there, it was always no parking because the turnaround is right in that little corner. Thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, um, Carrie, I got a couple. So um, uh, in regards to Skyline.
Yes.
So I know Segment Two is supposed to open October sixteen, but I, I read something where DTS is not planning to allow overnight parking in the park and ride lots for Skyline. But I think the person said, what is my incentive to catch the Skyline to the airport if I can't park my car in the park and ride lots overnight? So I, I think it's a DTS policy, so maybe you can ask them what they're thinking. Um, because unless the person's going to park their car, just do a day trip to the neighbor island and then come back, you know, I guess they'd be okay, but I guess he's saying, well, you know, what if I stay overnight on the neighbor islands or if I, you know, go to the mainland for, you know, a week or something?
Okay. I, I will, I would ask that question.
Okay, that would, yeah, I would like to know the answer to that one.
Okay.
But, okay, any other questions for the Mayor's Rep? Nope. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Councilmember District Eight, Representative, uh, Councilmember Okimoto's office.
Uh, good evening Chair, uh, good evening Board. Uh, this is Aaron, Aaron Wilson with the uh Office of Councilmember Okimoto. I'll try to be quick here. Uh, the council met September third. Uh, the, the Bill forty-nine fifty passed second reading. Uh, those are the bills that would increase the uh tax, the property tax homeowner's exemption by twenty thousand. Um, our Resolution twenty-five two oh five passed, uh, that would rename the Pearl City District Pool to the Ken Tsunagi Pearl City District Pool. I'm sure many of you have um run into him in his fifty-nine years of uh service to the community. And uh, the real, uh, I think the um Mayor's Rep was mentioning something about the re- rehabilitation of the localized streets. Phase twenty-four, B, C, D, and E. Um, let's see here, the third quarter twenty-twenty-six projects are out for bid and planning and design phase currently. Uh, DTS uh responded to one of our speeding concerns um along Mahalua Parkway between Leihua Drive and uh Kapanoi Street. Uh, they found speeding in both directions, so they will be narrowing um uh that, that uh, the streets there, um, just to help out with the uh speeding concerns there. Uh, that should be it. Is there any uh questions I could take back?
Uh, thank you. Any questions for Representative, uh, Councilmember Okimoto? This evening? Nope, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember District Two, Councilmember Wires office. Kelly, good evening.
Aloha Chair, members of the board, Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wires office. Uh, just wanted to, um, well, Councilmember definitely wanted to model the Mililani Mauna Board for doing the um joint meeting on the Gondola Project back in July. Um, there was over a hundred and fifty residents from central Oahu and the North Shore in attendance, and he appreciates everyone's uh commitment to uh our communities. Thank you very much for that. Do appreciate it as well. Um, and then Councilmember also wanted to highlight some of the real property um tax deadlines. Um, September thirtieth is the deadline to um file your home exemption. He wanted to highlight that if you um have a family home or one of the owners has recently passed, um, to please be sure to make sure that the current title owners or title holders rather, are signed up for the exemption. Um, Councilmember also would like to highlight the real property tax credit, um, which caps property tax at three percent of a homeowner's income. And households making eighty thousand dollars a year or below currently qualify for this credit. And then lastly, um, Councilmember's going to be doing like a mobile office, mobile district office throughout his district. Um, our next one coming up is this Friday. Um, we're going to be in Waikeli, but um, on Friday, October third, we're going to be at the Wahihua District Park Holicoa Room from ten AM to twelve PM. So if you know anyone that's interested to come by and talk stories with Councilmember, share your concerns, um, comments, suggestions, we'd be happy to uh talk story with you. And that's all that I had. If anyone has any questions for Councilmember, I can take them back.
Yeah, thank you, Kelly. Any questions for Councilmember Wires? Yeah, go ahead, Alice.
Uh, just a quick one, Mr. Chair, Chair. Um, Kelly, that, would you, did you hear our discussion on the um uh Gondola, Gondola thing out there in Snake Road?
Um, with um Senator Revere earlier?
We passed, you'll tell Matt, tell Matt that we passed the uh resolution?
Yes, thank you so much for that.
Okay.
Um, Wahihua passed theirs last night as well. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Comment. Okay, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Senate, just, I'm sorry.
Oh, online.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead. Daniel, go ahead, Ben.
Yes, um, could you give me the date and time for that talk story one more time, please?
Sure. So we're actually going to be in Waikeli this Friday. Uh, I believe that's the nineteenth. Um, but for Mililani residents, um, we're kind of grouping it with Wahihua. So we're going to be in Wahihua District Park. That's going to be Friday, October third from ten AM to twelve PM at the Holicoa Room. We'll see you there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Any other questions online? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Moving on to Senate District Seventeen, um Senator De La Cruz's office.
Here, Chair, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Charles.
Good evening, uh, Chair and Board. Just a quick uh report. Uh, Senator De La Cruz attended the Straub Milani Clinic Urgent Care Blessing. And then Senator Stafford had the food drive at Milani Town Center. And then just an update, just because we were, we were on recess last month, the construction of the HT metal plate was completed on Monday, August eleventh, and that's all I have, Chair. I'm uh open to take any questions or concerns back to the office. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Senator De La Cruz's office? Anyone online? All right, thank you, Charles.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, moving on to State House District Thirty-eight, Representative Matsumoto. Hi, Lauren.
Okay, good evening Board, members of the committee, members of the public. I have my newsletter for you here as well as we turned it in online, and so wanted to go over a few of the community updates. First, the things we've done is I got to partner with HPD. Uh, they had several events at schools in the central district to encourage people to slow down as they drive. So we had an event at Mililani Uka and then another one here at Milani Mauna right outside the front, encouraging drivers to slow down. Uh, we also was able to attend the Straub Urgent Care opening uh earlier this month, and I almost had to go the week after, so I'm glad we have something there. It's uh reassuring that we have things in our community and they have a wonderful thing like imaging, which our community desperately needs. Uh, the other thing is we had from Mililani, our twenty-twenty-five summer reading grand prize winner uh from Mililani, so I was able to partner with Rep Lachica's office. Um, they did a certificate there and were able to honor Cindy who won that. Uh, I got to talk at the library about how my son was reading very, very hard uh to win that award, but I'm glad we had a Mililani winner there. Over uh twenty-three thousand people entered uh the summer reading this year and they're hoping to up it the next year. Um, I was able to speak as a community helper at Hanalani Schools. Um, but I also wanted to go over, it's not in uh my handout, but we did have our listening tour last month. Uh, thank you to everybody who attended. So I did that with um all of my caucus members, and so we went to five locations across Oahu. We started here in Mauna, um, at Mililani, then we went to Moanalua, Wai'ani, Eva, then to Hawaii Kai. Um, and it was kind of a flipping the script on the traditional town hall. And so typically, people in the audience ask questions, the politicians at the front give, I always say a one-minute, pretty unsatisfactory answer, um, and then it continues on. And so we changed it, we were asking the audience questions. Um, and the way we framed it is what do you think is most important, or in other words, what do you want to talk about first? And that's what we talked about for fifteen minutes. What do you want to talk about second? What do you want to talk about third? Um, and the reason I bring that up is something that was really interesting from that listening tour is it didn't matter if we were in Mililani, Wai'ani, or Hawaii Kai. Every single place we went to had the same top three, and they had fifteen choices to choose from. And the top three, where I'm sure you can guess, cost of living, it was crime in public safety, and then government transparency. It was very interesting to me that every single district picked the same three and often by very high margins. Um, I will let you know, we're putting all of that data together. It's going to be up on the website, and so it's something really interesting to look at because we didn't just say what is the top issue. As people were standing up and sharing their thoughts, we then dug deeper. What is it for cost of living? And so we have a lot of, lot of data from that event and be happy to share that with you. Um, I did want to let you know, it's time, that time of year again for our Capitol Talkin' Tour uh that we do every fall break and we do it every spring break. And so it's going to be Wednesday, October ninth, from ten AM to twelve PM at the State Capitol. We do ask you to RSVP if you're going to come. Um, this is because we are going to be visiting the Lieutenant Governor's Office as well as the Governor's Office in our tour. Um, and they would like to know the number of people that will be coming through, so please RSVP. Uh, let people know that it is during fall break, so they can bring their kids. That's something we encourage, but you don't have to be a kid to attend. I once had somebody say, oh, I, I would love to come, but it's, you know, I'm not a a school age student. Anybody can come, it's, we'd love to have you and to learn about the process. The next thing that you have on your handout is our pre-session survey. So I really encourage everybody to fill out the twenty-twenty-six pre-session survey. Um, it is slowly rolling out through the mail, so you might have already received it in the mail. I talked about it last time as well, but I am going to be uh next week, starting going door to door and doing the survey as well. The reason this is so important is every single year, this is how I shape my bill package. It's based on what the residents of District Thirty-eight really would like to hear. Now, if you don't live in District Thirty-eight, you can still do the survey. It is going to ask you where you live, so that way we can have all the survey results and also filter out people who live in the district. So if you don't live in the district, you can still fill out the information. But um, we do have, we do ask you where you live. And then finally, just some events that are coming up. Um, there is the Milani YMCA trunk or treat on Saturday, October twenty-fifth. I will be there. Um, currently go and be painting that booth starting tomorrow, so we'll be doing all the artwork for that. Um, they do have an event at Milani Public Library, uh Chiefs at War, and so that's on Monday, September twenty-ninth from five-thirty to six-thirty. And also at the very bottom, there's Hawaiian Electric Financial Assistance. They wanted to share that for those who do need assistance with their electric bill. That is some information they asked us to push out. With that, that is my report for this evening.
Thank you, Lauren. Any questions for Representative Matsumoto this evening? Anyone online? All right, thank you, Lauren.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, House District Forty-six, Representative Peruso, Amy, are you online?
I am. Can you see me and hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, thank you first of all for passing that resolution. Um, very much appreciate that. Um, around the Gondola, we've been working on that for a while and I think the struggle is, you know, ongoing. It's going to be a long fight, but um, so still working on legislation for special session. Um, I think there is a good reason to expect that we will go back into special session. Um, if not for fiscal reasons, then to address other issues that have come up under the new administration. Um, so we've been working on legislation to prepare. Um, I've also been onboarding as a recently appointed member of the Finance Committee and engaged in site visits um most recently on Kauai. Also went to um Kona for the the H Sac, which is Hawaii State Association of Counties, and um because it is really critical that we be able to collaborate more, um, the state and county uh electeds. And to that end, as a member of the Data Task Force, we're also working to break down these silos between different levels of government a, as lo, as well as different branches. And we're also hoping that the Data Task Force can um facilitate work that will help keep some of our folks um who are going to encounter struggles with the new um work requirements around Medicaid and SNAP um to help identify those folks and to keep, you know, to stay connected with them and to make sure that they are um in compliance, so they can stay on the rolls. Um, so feels like a lot of things are connecting for me. Um, next week, I'm heading to the Schools of Democracy Conference as the Vice Chair of the Pace Commission. Um, my Chair, Justice Genoza, is also going along with the Superintendent, five principals, including Principal Murphy, because Mililani High School was one of the first two schools of democracy in the state, as I mentioned in a previous meeting to this group. Um, and Senator Kirani, and um, we're really hoping to expand this model of schools of democracy and I, we are expanding it to the middle schools, so um, I hope to see it uh flourish, not just in the rest of House District Forty-six, but um also come, going down to our middle schools. On um September twenty-seventh, we're going to have Day at the Lake, so I encourage everyone to attend at Lake Wilson. The twenty-eighth will be a Camp Makulaia party, so um, please look out for information about that. And on September thirtieth, our office is having at Wahihua Elementary. And on September thirtieth, our office is having at Wahua Elementary, um, a community forum on the politics of wellness and resilience. We've been working with the Governor's Office and Tia Hartzak, um, in that office because they have, um, really, uh, developed a, uh, a ve- very, uh, robust study around wellness and, and resilience at statewide. And we can compare, um, uh, residents' experiences and their, um, felt needs on a lot of different levels and across, across a lot of, um, brackets, and then also do some comparative analysis of. And we can look at it like by House District, Senate District, statewide. So the data is really remarkable. And, but at that meeting, we're not only going to talk about that, we'll also have, um, uh, Malama Ohana, who will give us an update on child welfare services and, um, how, how we're moving forward with that work. And, um, the, uh, Office of, uh, Homelessness from the state. So hoping to have some really interesting conversations at that session. Um, my, the last piece I want to mention, I mentioned that I'm working on legislation also as the Vice Chair of Energy and Environmental Protection. My focus this session will be on energy affordability to address in really concrete ways this cost of living crisis. Um, and so I want to alert this community that, um, the PUC has a docket on disconnections and I'll be letting folks know a little bit more about that. I'd like to see our communities get more involved in the PUC, more, um, community voice being heard at the PUC. Um, so I encourage folks to sign up for my newsletter. You can do that at representativeamyperuso.com. Um, and, or you can follow us on social media. So, um, I'm available for questions.
All right, thank you, Amy. Any questions for Representative Peruso's office? Anyone online? No, thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Take care. All right, moving on to House District Thirty-seven, Representative La Chica's office.
Aloha, Chair Hazama, members of the board and neighbors. Tosla Lobandon here, Office Manager for Representative La Chica. Uh, I already mentioned she couldn't be here tonight. She is currently participating at the Future Caucus Energy and Innovation Fellowship Conference in Santa Fe, New Mexico. However, she sends her warmest aloha for tonight's meeting. Um, I did drop some links in the chat. Um, first one is our newest, uh, latest newsletter, which I was also sent, um, last month and this month, as well as a bitly, uh, to our District Thirty-seven survey. Surveys are going out. We ask that you please fill them out to the best of your ability. I know that it can definitely be humbug to fill out multiple ones, however, it helps all of us. So please, if you see a survey, please fill it out. Please use your first and last name. Give us all of the information that we can use, um, to report that correctly. So if we have any follow-up questions, we can do that for you as well. And your voice really matters. We definitely want to hear that. Um, also, we have about three hundred and fifty responses. We sent it out mid-August, so we're really excited to see the participation, although I know we can get more. So please, we ask if you can, uh, go to the bitly link, fill it out, or you can also go to, uh, reptrishlachika.com and fill out the survey there as well. I also wanted to comment on Sierra Martin and KWO. First mahalo for all of their support. Um, they're, I'm always emailing them and they are so quick to respond and update us on statuses. So I highly encourage everyone, any agency, to please reach out to them. They are a wonderful resource. Uh, we are in the process, however, of coordinating with the military and state to get the trash cleaned up that is in Keppa Gooch. Uh, we have been made aware of the large pileup of trash that has been happening over the last few months. And so we wanted to organize, I guess, a community cleanup. However, more information will be coming out soon, so please stay tuned. Uh, we also have another exciting update. Um, in July, we shared the agrivoltic site visit that we had. Um, but now we are scheduling one for the community. The tour will be at the Hawaii Agrivoltic Research Site at Clearways Mililani Solar Farm, where crops and solar panels grow side by side. Uh, this innovative project is helping Hawaii lead the way in clean energy and sustainable agriculture. The tour will be on October first, from nine AM to twelve PM. Space is limited to just twenty participants, so if you would like to join, please call our office, um, or email us. I will drop my email in the chat as well to reserve your spot. I'm happy to take back any questions or concerns, and our office is always open for you. Mahalo for your time tonight, and we hope to see you at the tour or hear from you through the survey.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Representative La Chica's office? I see a question online. Go ahead.
Uh, your link for the newsletter doesn't work.
Okay, got it. I will refresh that now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question? Any other body, anybody online? So, yeah, Tosla, make sure you, um, ask Representative Chico to follow up with DOE on that, um, the middle school parking lot, MOU. Please.
Yes, I will. I know for sure that right now it is sitting in DOE's hands. So since that last update, um, from the city as well, we have also been made aware that DOE. However, as soon as Representative gets back, I will confirm that with her.
Okay. Yeah, just maybe she can find out how long they're going to take before they're done. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Tosla. Um, moving on to, uh, State Department of Transportation, Casey, good evening.
Uh, okay, uh, good evening, Chair Hazama and members of the Milani Maoka, Alani Valley Neighborhood Board, our Casey Aubrey from the State DOT Highways. At the July's meeting, I mentioned about some overgrowth and graffiti. During my field inspection last week, I'm happy to report our maintenance crew cut back the overgrowth and painted over and removed the graffiti. I did not see any new graffiti during my field inspection last week, except for one location along the H-two freeway northbound going towards Wahua. I worked with our maintenance crew on painting over the graffiti. At the July's meeting, I mentioned about the arrow for a new directional sign for the Wahua parking right to see that was pointing in the wrong direction. Our maintenance crew corrected their mistake. They finally installed the new, uh, uh, hot light, light standard on the H-two freeway southbound before the Milani off-ramp. And we finally repaired the expansion joint on the H-two freeway northbound right up as you approach Alani Valley off-ramp, allowing us to remove the steel plates. We thank the Neighborhood Board and the public for their patience. Effective yesterday, September fifteenth, and mentioned on yesterday's six PM news with Joe Moore, H dot highways are installed our first of ten noise cameras on the H-three freeway at Holly Coor interchange. Today, another noise camera will be installed on Alamoan Boulevard near Kalia Road. The remaining eight locations will be installed by January twenty-twenty-six. The purpose of the Noise Detection Pilot Program is to gather data on the types and level of noise generated by vehicles on Oahu roads. No tickets will be issued throughout this two-year, two-point-five million dollar pilot program under Senate Bill five-eight-eight that was passed during the twenty-twenty-three legislative session. Current laws prohibit the modification of motor vehicles, motorcycles, and mopeds, mufflers, and exhaust pipes that increases the volume or noise emitted. H dot will prepare monthly reports on the number of events detected that exceeds ninety decibels at each location, as well as the type of noise observed. These reports will be used to help with future legislation on vehicle noise and HPD enforcement. Location selected for installation was based on complaints recorded by HPD. Additional information and locations of the other eight sites and future sites can be found on our H dot website at the link shown on the slide. I'll put the link in the chat box. And finally, at July's meeting, there was concerns about the status of installing the raised crosswalks and rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the on and off ramps, and if you will be doing anything at the H-two southbound on-ramp for vehicles coming from Milani Maoka. Well, there has been some changes since my July report. Instead of installing raised crosswalks, we will be installing speed tables before the existing crosswalks, which will force vehicles to slow down before they approach the pedestrian crosswalk. We realized that installing raised crosswalks would be too late for speeding vehicles to slow down and avoid hitting the pedestrians using the crosswalk. We are also increasing the wattage from seventy-eight watts to one hundred fifteen watts on the existing highway light standard located between the new speed table and existing crosswalk. We do not plan to do anything to the H-two northbound and the H-two southbound on-ramps for vehicles coming from Milani Maoka. Our traffic branch evaluation did not justify installing any speed tables or rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the two single-lane on-ramps. For the H-two northbound off-ramp, there will be an approximately one hundred foot gap between the end of the speed, new speed table and existing crosswalk. These plans are pre-final plans. The final plan should be completed by this Friday. This slide shows the detail of the twenty-two-foot-long speed table that includes six-foot tapers at the front and back of the ten-foot-wide speed table. The table will approximately three inches high and will stretch across most of the page shoulder, except for the last one and a half foot of the shoulder for the taper connection to the existing gutter. This will prevent vehicles and motorcycles from avoiding the speed table. This slide shows the upgraded lighting plan, where we will be replacing the existing seventy-eight-watt LED luminaire with a new one hundred fourteen-watt LED luminaire. And this slide shows the two rectangular rapid flashing beacons being installed on each side of the crosswalk. For the H-two southbound on-ramp, the installation of the new speed table will be similar to the H-two northbound off-ramp with an approximately hundred-foot gap between the end of the new speed table and the existing crosswalk. These plans are also pre-final plans, with the final plans being completed by this Friday. This slideshow, the details of speed table for the H-two southbound on-ramp, which is similar to the speed table details for the H-two neighborhood on northbound off-ramp. Uh, this slideshow, the upgrade lighting plan for the H-two southbound on-ramp. And this slideshow is the two new rectangular, uh, rapid flashing beacons being installed on each side of the crosswalk. This slideshow is the details of the rapid, a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. And this slideshow, the details of pedestrian push button to activate the rectangular rapid flashing beacon. And for the H-two southbound off-ramp, the installation of the speed table is like the other ramps with an approximately one hundred-foot gap between the end of the new speed table and the existing crosswalk. These are final plans for the H-two southbound off-ramp. The details for the speed total is also similar to the speed tables for the other two ramps. And this slide shows the upgraded lighting plan, which is like the other two ramps. But the H-two southbound off-ramp will not have any new rectangular rapid flashing beacons on each side of the crosswalk like the other two ramps. During the traffic analysis, our traffic brands concluded that the rectangular rapid flashing beacons was not justified for the single-lane off-ramp. We're looking at completing the design plans, uh, this week, starting construction before the end of September, with construction complete, uh, completed, it, completed sometime in October. I want to thank Representative La Chica, Representative Matsumoto, and Councilmember Okimono for their assistance with following up with the administration and advocating for the Milani residents to have H dot highways to quickly adjust this major safety concern. Uh, this concludes my report. I can take any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, Casey. Any questions for State DOT? Go ahead, Dallas.
Uh, Casey, I wanted to thank you. Number one, for the, um, steel plate, I think, going toward Wahua has been lowered, and so it's not much of a bump. The second thing is, I thank you very much for your road crews. I think it was about three or four weeks ago. They, I don't know what the problem was, whether it was a sewer or telephone lines, but it's across from, from, uh, McDonald's on Meheula. And the bump was a good one foot high. And so most of us were doing everything we could to get around that, that thing, but we couldn't. So your crews were out there and they lowered it, so it's a very mild bump now. And I wanted to thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. That's Teresa.
Um, so after our last conversation about the off-ramp, um, and the speed humps or whatever was, uh, being considered, I did a little, uh, deep dive, not too far down the rabbit hole. Um, but I did notice that there, um, was conversation about speed tables as well, that they don't recommend those on freeway off-ramps. Um, the recommend, instead of speed tables, Federal Highway Administration and other safety experts recommend a combination of other engineering and design elements. Obviously, it's already been designed and constructed, but you know, they, it discussed, you know, advisory speed signs, um, rumble strips. Um, and, you know, we obviously can't close that intersection to pedestrian, have everybody cross on the other side where there's an on-ramp and you, it's more better, it's better to have the table at the on-ramp than the off-ramp. But I, I, I feel like I don't know who we're looking for advisement or if we're just coming up with things that exist. But I'm hoping that someone's doing some his, you know, background checks on what does it look like in use? You know, other cities with the same size or, 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 um, communities like ours around the different areas of the country. What are they using and what are they not using? I hope that someone's doing that due diligence, um, and not just paying for something that is installed that is going to damage vehicles or have a problem, and then we take it all out after the fact. Um, I would hope that someone's, you know, doing some research and has gotten that data, um, to use the best for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for DOT? Anyone online? Casey, I have one quick question. There's, uh, work going on on H-two southbound just before the H-one Wai'ani exit. What are they doing?
Oh, okay. I saw that too, um, during my inspection. I got to double check on that. That's a good question, Chair.
Yeah, I've been out there for a while. I was just wondering what the project is, so.
Okay, I'll go double check.
Okay, and just, you can email it to me, that's fine. I'll get it to the board.
Okay.
Thank you, Casey. Okay, moving on to approval of board minutes for our July fifteenth board meeting. We have any?
On the chair, um, there's, uh, one, one correction on page three, uh, the first bullet. Uh, it says, "Board Member Ka'apu," but I think it should have read Ku'e'u. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any other corrections or comments? The board minutes. Seeing none, any objections to adopting the board minutes for July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five board meeting as corrected? Seeing no objections, any abstentions? Seeing no abstentions, the board minutes have been adopted. Moving on to our committee report, I'm going to ask if we can summarize the committee reports this evening. Um, education, even.
Thank you. Yes, can we bring that up now? Thank you. Let's scroll down below the, the line which says administration. These are really important dates up here. I'll go through them briefly. Great, thank you. Yeah, as it says here, seventeenth, no school, nineteenth, leadership field trip. Uh, twentieth volleyball, twenty-second. It is important because the school bus online application period opens. Another Panda Express night, nice for the kids, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth. Uh, twenty-sixth is important because it's picture taking, yay. Uh, another Panda Express night, uh, night for, uh, uh, Team Seventy. Uh, important twenty-seventh volleyball, uh, versus, uh, Wahua. And October second, picture-taking retakes, uh, field trip, Schofield Bowl on, uh, October second. Uh, quarter one ends on October third. And, uh, sporting event with the middle school cross-country championships, which is important, one of the Schofield Bowls and Panda Night. And then come down here further, and this is the actual, uh, academic calendar for twenty-five, twenty-six academic year. And so that information is all there for your, uh, usage. If you have any questions, you can contact the Milani Middle School at eight oh eight six two seven nine thousand R via email at milanimiddle.k twelve dot hi dot US. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for education? Seeing none, moving on to military and civil defense.
No report.
Parks and Recreation. Planning permitting and zoning?
No report.
No report for transportation, recognition service awards. Alice, you have any teaching report?
No report.
All right, any other announcements this evening? Okay, hearing none. Our next meeting will be held here Tuesday, October twenty-first, at seven PM at the Milani Maoka Elementary School and via Webex. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.